Hello, how are you?
Not only that, but it is. But, it is. It is. We're four hours away from the end of our quarter. A lot of years, I'm four hours away from the end of my quarter. So, but I follow my charger, I got hot. That's the difference between being involved, a lot of all, not being involved. Now, being involved, it's a lot more important. You really, you live on somebody else, and I'm going to be there for all of them.
I mean, it's not me, but I think about it. You have to make me a question without it. Did you see George?
That was a lot of work.
You were from Anshron, based in Europe, like, from Anshron, from Europe, yeah. I mean, I traveled around the US for, uh, for years, so. Can I ask you, what is your name? Could I, uh, talk, would you talk to me for, uh, for a year?
Sure, good guy.
What is your name?
Dan, D I N.
Yeah?
Chandler, C I A, A N, G, L A.
Oh, oh, and what's your age, Dan? Sorry, I thought you always want to know. Is this the first day you've been out here?
No.
Every day?
Most of them.
Really? And what brings you out here?
Dog.
And, uh, and, like, who are you, um, what, what are you trying, like, what are you hoping to achieve? What's the message you're sending to?
New people thrive, work, and everyone thrive. Put it better, work, and everyone thrive.
And what did you bring here today?
Well, uh, you can see, there's a whole bunch of signs, and they've all got a message. They all speak, like, playing abortion, bringing the alcohol, global warming in the line, cranny junior in the line.
And the flag showed me.
I, I tell you, boy, I love it. Why do I have? Why do I have a red flag, a red flag, that's not, you know? It's called the devil, it's not me, it's called the devil. I'm going to go with that.
Do you need to back up some?
Yeah.
This is not, oh, good problem.
Problem, sir, would you mind speaking just a second?
There's a lot of people here today. A lot of people here are here today because of the maps being redrawn. Why would I, uh, me? Oh, yeah. I'm not sure where the. Yeah, thanks.
That's, uh, video for me, that's, uh, we went out there.
Anybody to talk to you? Thank you.
Yes, uh, we are, we are, and the one party that, that, we love the God, we love the God, we love. So, yeah, the demon rat, I, 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 I saw it. I don't know how, I don't know how they handle that, but I feel terrible about it, so, you know?
So some of what we'll see today is a preview of the arguments Democrats plan to make in their lawsuits challenging these maps, which again are expected to pass the House today. The Senate will then vote on the maps tomorrow. And Governor Greg Abbott says they could be signed into law before the end of this week. Aisha? Well, it has been political capital up until now, but they say that up until this point, they have gotten everything that they wanted from delaying the bill. They got California to introduce its own redistricting effort and their map which-
... applicable portions of the emergency plan during the type of natural disaster, providing a copy of the emergency plan to local emergency management coordinators, implementing basic fire safety standards. To better prepare youth camps specifically for emergencies, Senate Bill 1 files as filed-
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Trossler, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't it true that had the members of this House shown up and done their jobs in this first special session, we would have already passed critical flood relief legislation and provided financial relief and support for all of the impacted communities across the whole country, including mine?
Ms. Trossler, that is not a proper parliamentary inquiry.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Trossler, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't it true that because we did not have quorum, because members of this body chose not to show up and do their jobs, the work of Texans has been delayed? Not stopped, but delayed. And so that relief to those families is finally going to be done within these next two weeks because they have finally shown up to work.
Ms. Trossler, that is not a proper parliamentary inquiry.
Thank you.
Mr. Doorkeeper?
Mr. Speaker, I have a message from the Senate at the door of the House.
Admit the messenger.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm directed by the Senate to inform the House, the Senate has taken the following action. The Senate has passed the following measures. SB 2 Perry relating to disaster preparedness, response, and recovery requiring a license authorizing fees. SB 3 Betancourt relating to outdoor warning signs and flash flood area prone areas. SB 5 Huffman relating to making supplemental appropriations for disaster relief and giving direction and adjustment authority regarding those appropriations. SB 6 Perry relating to regulation of certain products derived hemp, including consumable hemp products and hemp-derived cannabinoids contained in those products requiring occupational licenses and registrations, imposing fees, creating criminal offenses, authorizing administrative penalty. SB 8 Middleton relating to the designation and use of certain spaces and facilities according to sex, authorizing a civil penalty and private civil right of action. SB 10 Betancourt relating to the calculation of the voter approval tax rate for certain taxing units. SB 11 Parker relating to affirmative events to prosecution for certain victims of trafficking of persons or compelling prostitution. SB 12 Hughes relating to the duty of the Attorney General to prosecute criminal offenses prescribed by the election laws of this state. SB 13 Middleton relating to the use of political subdivision of public funds for lobbying activities. SB 4 Perry relating to the provision by a political subdivisions of credits against impact fees to builders and developers for certain water conservation and reuse projects. SB 15 King relating to certain files maintained by a law enforcement agency regarding certain employees of the agency. SB 16 West relating to real property theft and real property fraud, establishing recording requirements for certain documents concerning real property, creating a criminal offense of real property theft and real property fraud, and establishing a statute of limitations, restitution, and certain procedures with respect to those offenses. SB 18 Zaffarini relating to an exemption from the requirement to obtain a permit from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality-
The following bills on first reading and referral.
Mr. Speaker?
Not at this time after first reading and referral, I'll recognize you.
HB number 19 by Anchea relating to the real property theft and real property fraud establishing recording requirements for certain documents concerning real property, creating criminal offenses in real property theft and real property fraud, and establishing statute limitation, restitution, and certain procedures with respect to those offenses, further to the Committee on Criminal Jurisprudence. HB number 21 by Thompson relating to the calculation of the penalty and interest incurred on a delinquent ad valorem tax, further to the Committee on Ways and Means. HB number 26 by Oliverson relating to the funding of contracting with unemployment for law enforcement agencies in certain counties, further to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. HB number 27 by Harris relating to the consideration by a groundwater conservation district of module available groundwater when issuing permits, further to the Committee on Natural Resources. HB number 214 by Orr relating to the designation and use of certain spaces and facilities according to sex, authorizing a civil penalty and private civil right of action, further to the Committee on State Affairs. HB number 265 by Hall relating to the governmental oversight of youth camps, including youth camp rules and the Youth Camp Advisory Committee, further to the Committee on Public Health. SB number 2 by Perry relating to the disaster preparedness, response, and recovery requiring a license authorizing fees, further to the Committee on Disaster Preparedness and Flooding Select. SB number 3 by Betancourt relating to the outdoor warning sirens in flash flood prone areas, further to the Committee on Disaster Preparedness and Flooding Select. SB number 5 by Huffman relating to making supplemental appropriations for disaster relief and giving direction and adjustment authority regarding those appropriations, further to the Committee on Disaster Preparedness and Flooding Select. SB number 6 by Perry relating to the regulation of certain products derived from hemp, including consumable hemp products and the hemp-derived cannabinoids contained in those products requiring occupational licenses and registrations, imposing fees, creating criminal offenses, authorizing administrative penalty, further to the Committee on Public Health. SB number 8 by Middleton relating to the designation and use of certain spaces and facilities according to sex, authorizing a civil penalty and a private civil right of action, further to the Committee on State Affairs. SB number 10 by Betancourt relating to the calculation of the voter approval tax rate for certain taxing units, further to the Committee on Ways and Means. SB number 11 by Parker relating to the affirmative defense and prosecution for certain victims of trafficking of persons or compelling prostitution, further to the Committee on Criminal Jurisprudence. SB number 12 by Hughes relating to the duty of the Attorney General to prosecute criminal offenses prescribed by the election laws of the state, further to the Committee on State Affairs. SB number 13 by Middleton relating to the use by a political subdivision of public funds for lobbying activities, further to the Committee on State Affairs. SB number 14 by Perry relating to the provision by political subdivision of credits against impact fees to builders and developers for certain water conservation reuse projects, further to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. SB number 15 by King relating to certain files maintained by law enforcement agencies regarding certain employees of the agency, further to the Committee on Homeland Security, Public Safety, and Veterans Affairs. SB number 16 by West relating to the real property theft and real property fraud, establishing recording requirements for certain documents concerning real property, creating a criminal offense of real property theft and real property fraud, and establishing statute of limitations, restitution, and certain procedures with respect to those offenses, further to the Committee on Criminal Jurisprudence. SB number 18 by Zaffarini relating to an exemption from the requirement to obtain a permit from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for certain dams or reservoirs operated and maintained for the purpose of erosion, floodwater, and sediment control, further to the Committee on Disaster Preparedness and Flooding Select. SB number 34 by Huffman relating to the testimony or the production of evidence before a House of the Legislature or a legislative committee, further to the Committee on House Administration.
Ms. Morale Shaw, for what purpose?
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Mr. Speaker, good morning. Isn't it a lawful procedure to deny quorum that's embedded in the Texas Constitution and has been used since as early as 1870 by the minority party to deny majority overreach?
That is a hypothetical inquiry, the Chair does not respond to general questions about rules or procedure.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Morale Shaw, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't it true that Governor Abbott declared an emergency on July 4th for the Kerr County floods?
That is not a parliamentary inquiry.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Morale Shaw, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
When a governor declares a disaster, a state disaster, isn't it true that he also has the power to direct state funds to that disaster area to provide relief without a legislative session, without a special session, and without any action of the Texas Legislature?
That is not a parliamentary inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Dutton, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
State your inquiry.
Mr. Speaker, the House is governed by a set of rules, is that right?
Yes.
And one of those rules has to do with-
Mr. Dutton, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
State your inquiry, please.
One of the rules that we have relates to quorum, is that correct?
Members, please take your conversations outside the realm. Mr. Dutton, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Mr. Speaker, is a member allowed to use the rules in the House in terms of governing their conduct?
Mr. Dutton, the Chair does not respond to either hypothetical inquiries or general questions about the rules of the House.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Dutton, state your inquiry.
Is one of the rules related to quorum requirements?
Mr. Dutton, as previously stated, the Chair does not respond to general inquiries about the House rules.
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
Mr. Dutton, state your inquiry.
Does the Constitution trump our rules?
Mr. Dutton, the Chair does not respond to general inquiries.
Well, specifically, Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Does the Constitution limit the ability of members to be arrested?
Again, Mr. Dutton, that is a general inquiry.
Well-
That does not relate to the business before the House.
Well, it seems pretty specific to me, Mr. Speaker, can parliamentary inquiry-
State your inquiry, Mr. Dutton.
Can you explain to me why that's a general?
There is no item of business before the House, and your inquiry does not relate.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand, Mr. Speaker. There's no what?
There is no item of business before the House at this time, and your inquiry is not related to any item of business before the House.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Dutton, state your inquiry.
Is the only acceptable parliamentary inquiry related to a matter that's currently before the House?
That is correct.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Dutton, state your inquiry.
So any other parliamentary inquiry would be unacceptable?
General questions about the rules of the Constitution are not in order.
That's not my question, Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
Mr. Dutton, state your inquiry.
My question is simply this, is that unless a matter is before the House, there can be no parliamentary inquiry, except the ones related to that matter?
That is correct.
Is that in the rules, Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
State your inquiry.
Can you cite me the rule?
It is the explanatory note following Rule 1, Section 9.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
State your inquiry.
Could, I don't have my rulebook, could you read the rule to us?
You're welcome to come down front, and we'll get you a copy.
And Section 9, is that what you said, Mr. Speaker, Rule 1, Section 9?
Rule 1, Section 9, explanatory note 4.
Explenary Note 4?
Page 10 of your manual.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Speaker.
State your inquiry.
The explanatory notes govern the rules in this House?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. That's bullshit.
Ms. Inahosa, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
If I leave, if I attempt to leave this chamber today without signing a permission slip, am I subject to arrest by the government?
As I stated today, no one will be able to leave the chamber without a permission slip.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Inahosa, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Why is an arrest under the call of the House not prohibited by Article 3, Section 14 of the Texas Constitution that prohibits members from being arrested during the legislative session?
Ms. Inahosa, that is a general question that the Chair declines to answer.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Inahosa, for what purpose?
If I attempt to leave this floor today with this call of the House on me, why am I not protected from arrest by Article 3, Section 14 of the Texas Constitution that prohibits the arrest of members during the legislative session?
That is a hypothetical and general question, as previously stated, the Chair declines to answer those.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Inahosa, for what purpose?
Can I walk out right now of this House without being arrested? Or am I protected by Article 3, Section 14 of the Texas Constitution?
There are separate provisions under the Constitution that provide for maintaining and compelling a quorum, they are separate. Ms. Inahosa, as previously stated, under the call of the House, there are permission slips that you are welcome to take. Ms. Moore, for what purpose?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't it true the members that just came back here and are upset about the rules actually voted for those rules?
That is not a proper parliamentary inquiry.
Thank you.
Chair lays out on second reading, House Bill 4.
HB number 4 by Hunter relating to the composition of the districts for the-
Back up, members. Mr. Guerin, for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and members. Mr. Speaker, I move that the House grant permission for all committees and subcommittees to meet while the House is in session through and including Monday, August 25th pursuant to their committee postings. I move passage.
Members, you've heard the motion, is there any objection? There is objection, there is a record vote requested, clerk, please ring the bell. Show Mr. Guerin voting aye, Mr. Hunter voting aye, Mr. Harris voting aye. Show Mr. McQueen voting aye. Show Mr. King voting aye. Have all members voted. Have all members voted. There being 92 ayes and 44 nays, the motion prevails. Chair lays out on second reading, House Bill 4.
HB number 4 by Hunter relating to the composition of the districts for the election of members of the United States House of Representatives from the state of Texas.
Chair recognizes Mr. Hunter to explain the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members. I believe according to the rules, I will have 20 minutes. I'm going to give a short opening because many of you have not been involved, and I want you to know exactly what's happening. We are here today to take up the congressional plan. This plan I'm about to lay out was introduced by myself on Monday, August 18th, and it was passed by the House Select Committee on Congressional Redistricting on August 18th. Due to the Governor's proclamation, the House studied the current Texas congressional districts. This plan originated in the first-called special session before the chamber lacked a quorum. Due to the available time, which we all need to remember, we're in 30-day special sessions. In the first-called session, and I want all of you to know this, members, in the first-called session, we held three public hearings. We were not required to hold those hearings. So three hearings were held for the public, no requirement for those hearings. All sessions, anyone was invited to register and testify. Arrangements were made for anyone to submit written comments. One session, we allowed remote witness presentations. One session was held on Saturday, and one session was held after normal working hours. All members of the committee were offered the opportunity to state their views, question. Other interested members of the House were allowed to attend and participate. After the public hearings during the first-called special, the committee held a 12-plus-hour hearing to allow further testimony once the plan was introduced. All sessions were live-streamed and recorded, and Red Apple was open for use. As well at these hearings, we heard testimony from a number of members and witnesses, including Congress. At the outset, it's important to note that redistricting can be done at any point in time. Let me repeat that, members. Redistricting can be done at any point in time. And I want everybody to know this. You want transparency? Here's the U.S. Supreme Court legal transparency. The underlying goal of this plan is straightforward. Improve Republican political performance. Now, when drawing congressional districts, we have to look at them a little different when it comes to population requirements. We have to draw districts with population as nearly equal as possible to the ideal district size. This is different than when you do state legislative districts. The ideal size for a congressional district is about 766,987. The plan before you meets the population requirements for one person, one vote under the U.S. Constitution. If somebody proposes an amendment, they will need to meet the same requirements. We are allowed to draw congressional districts on the basis of political performance as recognized by the U.S. Supreme Court in Rucho versus Common Cause. These districts were drawn primarily using political performance to guide the redrawing of districts. Also, the Fifth Circuit in Pettaway versus Galveston indicates that the law has changed. The court held that Section 2 does not require us to draw coalition districts. So giving partisan political performance as an acceptable reason and clarification from these courts, we have redrawn the congressional map with that emphasis. Another important law is the Voting Rights Act. Although race cannot be the predominant factor in drawing maps, Section 2 of the Act prohibits enactment of any plan that restricts minority citizens from having an opportunity to elect their preferred candidate of choice if certain circumstances exist. This plan includes political considerations, public testimony, recognition of population growth, and recent changes in voter trends. Now let's talk about this map. 37 of the 38 congressional districts have changed to some degree. The primary changes are focused on only five districts for partisan purposes. It is important to note, please note, members, four of the five new districts are majority-minority Hispanic, what we call C-VAP districts, and that's a citizen-voting-age population. Each of these newly drawn districts now trend Republican in political performance. While there's no guarantee of electorate success, Republicans will now have an opportunity to potentially win these districts. The five new districts, we have CD 9, 50.15% what we call Hispanic citizen-voting-age population, that's H-CVAP. CD 28, which is approximately 86.72% H-CVAP. CD 32 remains a non-minority district. CD 34, 71.93% H-CVAP. CD 35, 51.57% H-CVAP. This also improves political performance for Republicans in districts CD 2, 8, 9, 17, 22, 38. Some data points in comparison to 2021. In 2021, there were nine Hispanic-majority-age districts. In this plan, there are 10 Hispanic-majority-age districts. In the 2021 plan, there were seven Hispanic citizen-voting-age districts, and under this plan, there are eight. There are no black C-VAP districts under the 2021 plan. In the proposed plan, there are two majority-black C-VAP districts. CD 18, 50.71% black C-VAP, compared to 38.99% in 2021. CD 30, 50.41% black C-VAP, 46% in 2021. In the Harris County Houston area, there are currently what they call two coalition districts and one Hispanic C-VAP district. In the proposed plan, CD 18 becomes a new black C-VAP district. CD 9 becomes a new H-CVAP district, and CD 29 becomes a majority Hispanic VAP district, that's voting-age population, which should continue their political performance. CD 9, 50.15%, H-CVAP. CD 18, 50.71% black C-VAP. CD 29, 43.45% H-CVAP, and 32.69% black C-VAP. All surrounding Republican districts to continue to perform for the Republicans. This is a good plan, I urge its adoption. But, Mr. Speaker, members, according to the U.S. Supreme Court, you can use political performance, and that is what we've done. I'll answer questions.
Ms. Romero, for what purpose? Ms. Thompson, for what purpose?
Mr. Speaker, does the gentleman yield?
Gentlemen yield for questions?
Yes.
Gentlemen yields for questions?
Mr. Chairman, who decided that these should be changes made from the introduction version of this bill?
Who decided the plan?
Who decided that there should be changes made from the introduction version of the bill?
I do not know who decided, but it had been discussed since April that congressional redistricting could be an issue, especially with the new case law and the new population trends, and I made the decision that I would file this bill.
Mr. Chairman, when the first-called session, special session, the committee produced a bill that where they had indicated there would be five new congressional districts for Republicans. Subsequently thereafter, a special, second special session was called. Upon meeting of the committee, there was a vote taken on a amended part of a bill that had been previously voted out on the first special session of this year. Who made a decision to amend the bill from the first-called special session?
Me and the lawyers.
Pardon me?
Me and the lawyers.
And what was the rationale for the changes of you and the lawyers?
Well, if what we're talking about is there was a committee substitute that was adopted on Monday, it increased Republican political performance. Legally, I was told that it would follow the case law, and nobody was here for 18 days. And so my view is, we're given every opportunity we can. Nobody met with me, nobody came in, and so I talked to the lawyers, and we increased Republican political performance, and we increased the map from where it was. So I would say me and the lawyers.
So you had to go in and look at precincts to do this, correct? You had to go in and look at precincts in order to make those changes?
I would say-
I would say, Dean, that I visited with counsel, and they and their resources looked at the specifics.
And when, and who made a decision on what precincts would go into that amended map? I think it was, what, 2333?
Counsel.
Counsel and counsel alone? There was no input by you?
That's the, well, I mean, I told him I wanted to increase Republican political performance, and I'm not involved in the specifics. And I asked, as everybody in here does when you hire a lawyer, this is my goal, can you accomplish it? And they did it, and I asked him to follow the law, follow Rucho, follow Pettaway, and this was the map that was developed.
So what you're telling the House is that you and you alone made a decision to make those changes?
No. As I just said, I made the decision to look at this map, can we increase Republican performance? Since nobody was around and that we had a walkout, they then went to work, came up, and increased the Republican performance.
So when did you make a decision that you needed to make a change in the map from the first special session to the second special session?
The walkout occurred August 3rd. It was probably a couple of days after that.
On August the 3rd, subsequently to that, didn't we have hearings?
No, nobody was here. It was a quorum break. We couldn't do anything, couldn't meet, couldn't let the public have hearings. Nobody could meet with me, nobody could provide an amendment. So we had to just do things on our own.
So there were no, there were no input? I think what you're telling me is there was no input by the Speaker, there was no input by the Lieutenant Governor, there was only input by you and the person that you indicated helped you draw the changes, and you alone made a decision that there should be some changes to the map that was a part of the first special session?
That's not what I said. I said...
Oh, I'm so sorry. What did you say then?
I said exactly what you know I said.
No, I don't know what you're saying.
Yes, I did. If you'd been here for 18 days, you would have known. Number one, I decided to take a look at this map to see if we could increase Republican performance. I can tell you, a lot of people wanted to increase Republican performance. I can't tell you everybody that has raised that issue. I went to the lawyers, said we have a plan, can we increase it, and would it be legal? They said they would look at it, came back and told me this plan is legal.
Well, I can, based upon the testimony that I think that the committee held, the three hearings, based upon the testimony that we heard, based upon what was supposed to have been submitted as written testimony, it is my understanding that there was a 100 to 1 not to make changes in the maps. Am I missing something?
Yeah, you missed 88 Republican members that didn't get an opportunity as well either. My view, you held public hearings, Dean, that were not required. The Chairman of the Committee decided to include the public, and I'm glad he did. But just because certain groups come in, and if you remember, there was certainly a lot of publicity that, I can't remember the source yet, but I think it'd be checked, that there were certain third-party organizations paying and getting field advisors to come into these hearings to take a political stance. So if they're going to use the political under Rucho, so can we.
But were the 88 members who are members of this body denied the right to come and testify before that committee?
No, but they've been here the whole time, and they have been wanting to move this. I'm just glad I'm able to get this particular plan, because it may get reviewed again.
Were their constituents denied the right to come and participate in the hearings?
What's that? I couldn't hear.
Were their constituents denied the right to participate in those hearings?
That I don't know, because I just presented the bill. I don't know.
Were their constituents denied the right to submit their opinion or testimony to the committee?
I don't think so, but again, I was just presenting the bill. That was not my function.
But you made a statement that they were not a part of it.
I didn't say they were not important. In fact, in the hearing, as you recall, I made a big statement that I thought they were important, and even though there was opposition, I was glad they came, and some of the information in this map came from those hearings. So I disagree with you 100 percent. I'm glad we did the hearings. I'm glad we got the input, and I'm glad that a lot of people submitted it and wrote it. So absolutely was taken in. Just because somebody agrees or disagrees with me doesn't mean that I'm not going to listen. And in fact, I offered at the hearing for members to come visit with me and members to come talk with me, and if they needed to bring somebody in, that they could. I did hear from some Republicans.
Well, to agree and disagree is a part of our democratic process.
Absolutely.
Okay, and they did have an opportunity if had they wanted to come?
Yes, I do agree that they had an opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, let me draw your attention to Congressional District Number 9. I noticed in the Congressional District Number 9, in your Amendment 2333, you discuss in committee that your map draws this to be a Hispanic majority district. Is that correct?
Are you talking about the bill that is right here today?
Yeah, I'm talking about that amendment that was voted out of committee.
Well, we didn't do an amendment, we did a committee substitute.
Well, a substitute.
Okay, yes.
And I think the number was 2333?
I think that's the map number is Plan C 2333.
Yeah, that's the one we all, that's what I'm talking about. And you indicated today that you all reconfigured that to be a Hispanic majority district, correct?
We said that Hispanic C-VAP under the committee substitute would be 50.15 percent.
And you have said in your brief that the Latino population in Texas support Republicans?
That said that...
In your brief?
In my brief?
Didn't you say that, I've heard you say that Latinos seem tend to support Republicans?
Well, not me, but I certainly welcome all of them being a South Texan, and I do think political performance and trend is going that direction to support Republicans, absolutely. But I don't know what you mean. I don't think I said somebody preferred. I think there is a political performance that's showing preference to certain Republicans in different regions of the state based on everybody.
And are you talking about the racial polarization analysis?
Well, I don't know what you mean by racial polarization analysis. I know about data that was done by H-CVAP, HVAP, black C-VAP, and black VAP, which is a little bit different. That's what I'm relying on.
Well, this is a data that is normally utilized when they're drawing to see what is the performance of different races. They're looking at dilution and inclusions and things of this nature, and they show that in CD 9, the person that you pull in have more of a tendency to vote Democratic than Republican, and pulling in that percentage of Latinos in Congressional District 9 and new configured District 9 will show that if they are a part of that congressional district, that their voting power may be diluted. Are you aware of that?
I'm not real clear on that. Are you, I don't think there's a dilution. Political performance is what this, it's CD 9, the Hispanic C-VAP, is 50.15 percent. It's a new Hispanic C-VAP. Liberty County is now in CD 9. There does show in this CD Republican partisan performance. Previously, though, CD 9 was not a majority of a single group. So now they are.
Gentlemen's time has expired.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Thompson, for what purpose?
I move that the time be extended.
Members, you heard the motion, is there objection, Chair? There is objection. Members, that will require a record vote. Clerk, ring the bells. Senator Hunter, voting aye. Mr. Vasut, voting aye. Mr. Tenderhold, voting aye. Mr. Alcott, voting aye. Show the Speaker voting aye. Lopez, voting aye. Toth, voting aye. Swanson, voting aye. Have all members voted. Ms. Schaffner, voting aye. Have all members voted. Have all members voted. 136 ayes and one nay, the motion prevails.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
May I, I know some of my colleagues, other colleagues have questions to ask you, but I want to continue asking maybe a little later, and I'm going to let some others ask questions.
Speaker? Mr. Romero, for what purpose?
Mr. Jim Yild for questions?
Gentlemen yield for questions?
Yes.
Gentlemen yields for questions?
Chairman Hunter, I'm a little troubled. I've never heard anyone say in this body, and you've certainly been here longer than I have, but for you to say that you're not required to have hearings, I understand that may be a fact, but I don't understand that to be Texan. I don't understand that to be something that we would not welcome opinions of the public. And yet, we did hold three public hearings. So with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, when you say that this was just you and the lawyers, what would you tell any Texan? Because I believe every person that testified testified under oath. Is that correct?
That I don't know. I hope they did.
Well, if they registered to testify before any committee in this House, they do have to register under oath that what they say is true and correct. Is that correct?
I follow the House rules like you, but you're asking me a personal question. I don't run the committee. I'm sure Mr. Vasut did everything accurately, but you're asking me beyond my role.
And that's where I'm troubled, Mr. Chairman, is that someone would come down, affirm that everything that they're going to say is true and correct, and then to hear now you say that they're not required, didn't have to happen, and that you did this with you and your lawyers, and you gave them instructions, means to the public, they really don't have any reason to come to this great building that we serve in with so much history, because they don't, they won't be heard.
I 100 percent disagree, and I get the right to respond. Number one, I 100 percent disagree with you. Number two, and you're not going to like this, but for 18 days, things could have happened. You all chose to walk out. To me, you damaged the process. You kept people away, you kept work from being done. Don't use that as an excuse to belabor this bill, too legally, and I'm talking legally. We didn't have to do hearings. I just said Chairman Vasut asked for hearings. I supported him on those hearings. I sat in a hearing in addition for 12-plus hours. I am glad we did hearings, and I also encouraged all members and anybody that they wanted to come visit with me. And sir, for 18 days, certain members did not. And so to come up here and say, "Public don't matter," they absolutely matter, and by gosh, you're forgetting political performance. That political performance, Republicans do matter, and they're in this bill.
Well, let's talk about political performance.
And U.S. Supreme Court says we can do that.
Let's talk, I'm going to ask you a couple of series of questions. As you know, the population growth in Texas has been, over the last 20 years, has been almost half of that has been Latino population growth. So, Mr. Chairman, did you do any analysis or review whether voting is racially polarized in Texas before, during, or after the drawing of this map? And if you did, can you tell me what districts of the new maps are located in areas where racially profiled, racially polarized voting exists?
Representative, I'm going to give you the answer that I gave in committee, so I'm consistent. One, I worked with counsel, just like your opposition groups are working with counsel against this plan.
So you never asked counsel?
Let me finish, let me finish. So counsel told me that they had checked everything legally, did everything analytically, and absolutely assured me this bill is proper, proper form and legal. And so if the polarization that you're asking about, I'm certain that they did all that analysis, but I relied on them, I don't have the specific knowledge.
So you're certain? That makes me feel comfortable that you might have directed them to include racially polarized voting. So what analysis of Latino voter preferences did you conduct before drafting any of the districts in this plan?
So what I just said is I asked counsel to look at increasing political performance and to follow all rules, regulations, laws, to make sure that what was proposed was legal and proper. What they did specifically, I don't know.
So you, do you agree that racially polarized voting exists in Texas?
From a legal standpoint, I think that's debatable in the courtroom, and I'm not able to tell you that now. Is race different in certain areas of the state and how people treat each other? Absolutely. But in this particular representative, I would do everything I can to have lawyers draft it so it is proper and that it does do what is legal.
So that's somewhat vague, so I'm going to just dive a little deeper. You gave direction for the reasons that you gave, but I'm asking specifically, in giving those directions and you said following the law, do you believe that they considered racially polarized voting?
Do I have personal knowledge? The answer is no. Do I believe that they checked every box, checked every law? The answer is yes. I have huge respect for the lawyers.
Mr. Chairman, does the Federal Voting Rights Act require the creation of any Latino-majority congressional district in Texas?
I do know that when you talk about coalition districts, which is...
That's not my question, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect...
Yes, it is. Disrespect, you're not letting me answer. I don't agree with your question. You set a mandate on Hispanic. That does impact coalition districts. It does impact the issue of majority-majority, and the Fifth Circuit in Pettaway says you're wrong. Now, number two, is there a specific requirement? Four out of the five brand-new congressional are Hispanic? Four of the five are Hispanic majority?
Mr. Chairman, does the voting...
But if there's a requirement, I'd have to ask counsel.
So the answer to the next question, does the Federal Voting Rights Act require the creation of any black-majority congressional district in Texas? And I believe your answer is you don't know.
No, I would do what you and 90 percent of the people on this floor that have lawyers that have created the Lawyer Annuity Plan and redistricting, you all go to your lawyers to get them to give you a response. I go to my lawyer to get a response. So if there's a legal question, I would go to them, and they would give me that information.
And I do believe that when I talk to my lawyers, I give them direction, clear direction. I don't say follow all the laws, especially given when we're talking about the population growth, the growth of our state and where it's come from.
But I disagree now, sir.
That wasn't a question.
No, you're not supposed to make statements. You make a statement, I get to respond. You just said you don't tell them to follow all the laws. I absolutely do. I tell them to follow all the laws.
Mr. Chairman, are you aware of any additional DOJ communications to the state of Texas through the Governor's Office, AG's Office, or otherwise regarding unlawfulness of the current congressional map?
I am aware through the committee process that there was a Department of Justice letter. I've had no communication with Department of Justice. I have no communication with the Governor's Office about that. I've had no communication with anybody about that except general members in the committee process.
Mr. Chairman, are you aware if the DOJ has threatened any enforcement proceeding or action since the initial DOJ letter to Governor Abbott?
I have no specific knowledge on that.
Mr. Chairman, do you believe in the Dallas-Fort Worth region where I'm from that there should have been a Latino-majority district created? And do you realize that there is no Latino-majority district in Tarrant County?
Well, there is in the North Texas area, but if you're trying to split it up, for example, Houston, are you talking about under the New Five?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
If you're talking about under the New Five, it's Houston, Valley South, Dallas area is a brand-new district, Coast South, San Antonio. So those were the areas that the New Five are, if that's what... So those were the areas that the New Five are, if that's what you meant to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The gentleman's time has expired.
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Turner, for what purpose?
May I extend time?
An extension of time at this point requires unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the extension of time? There is an objection.
Mr. Speaker?
No extension. Yes, sir, Mr. Turner, but for what purpose? Mr. Turner, for what purpose?
In light of the fact that House Bill Four is, if passed, is going to affect the federal representation of more than 30 million Texans for the rest of this decade, would the body reconsider any objections to one more extension of time, please?
Mr. Turner, there was an objection, therefore the time cannot be extended.
May I make another motion so members may reconsider their objection?
Yes, sir, you may.
Mr. Speaker?
Members, is there any objection to the extension of time at this point? There are objections, so it will not be extended, Mr. Turner.
Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
Mr. Turner, state your inquiry.
Could my motion be put to a record vote, please?
The record vote is not necessary. It only takes one objection, and there is more than one. There has been more than one objection expressed to the speaker at this point.
If a record vote, Mr. Speaker, parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
If a record vote has been requested by one or more members, is it not the custom of the House to grant a record vote?
Members, Mr. Turner has requested a record vote. Vote yes if you're in favor of extending the time. Vote no if you're not. The clerk will ring the bell. Show Mr. Hunter voting no. Show Mr. Vassut voting no. Have all members voted. Have all members voted. There being 52 ayes and 82 nays, the motion for record vote fails. The time is not extended. Mr. Hunter, please come to the front. The following amendment, the clerk will read the amendment.
Amendment by Turner.
Chair recognizes Mr. Turner to explain the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members, this amendment strikes the enacting clause of House Bill Four. And I offer this amendment because House Bill Four is an illegal and racially discriminatory congressional map, and this body has no business passing it. Members, let me remind you. Legislative seats, be they in this chamber, in this building, or in Washington, DC, do not belong to politicians. They belong to the people of Texas. They belong to the families who are rebuilding from the central Texas floods last month, to the Texans who are being crushed by high costs, working families choosing between groceries, rent, or a doctor's visit. They belong to the people of Texas, the very people each one of us has been sent here to represent. And we would do well to remember that today. But today, there aren't any bills on this floor for flood relief, no bills for tax reform, no bills to lighten the burden for Texas families. There's only one item on this calendar, the very first item of this special session, the item that we have a call on the House for, a radical racially discriminatory mid-decade redistricting plan that surgically removes and strips away minority representation in the US Congress. Texans and Americans now all across the country are watching, and they know this map before us is a calculated maneuver to diminish the voices of the very communities that power Texas, that has given Texas its phenomenal growth. Communities of color make up 95% of our growth in the last decade. The census data bears that out. And it's thanks to them, thanks to those Texans, that we gained two seats in the Congress in this decade. Yet those same communities are being punished with maps that dilute their voting power. Today, under the current map, which is already flawed as it is, four districts, African-American voters have the ability to send the candidate of their choice to the US House. In this map, only two. Only eight districts out of the 38 in this map are majority Latino, despite Latinos representing more than 40% of the Texas population. Discrimination against voters of color sadly is not new. Texas has a long and painful record when it comes to redistricting. Every decade since the Civil Rights Act of 19, or the Voting Rights Act of 1965, courts have found that Texas discriminated against voters of color. There is currently a federal lawsuit underway in El Paso with a decision pending challenging the state's maps from four years ago. What is new is that instead of letting the courts do their job, we are being forced to race ahead with this mid-decade redraw. This is unprecedented, and it is wrong. Members, it breaks my heart to see how this illegal and rigged mid-decade redistricting scheme is dividing our state and our country. This is Texas. It's not Washington, DC. The impulses of outside politicians and their billionaire backers shouldn't dictate what we do in this chamber, in this House. We were sent here to work for the people of Texas, not them. Members, we are at a turning point for our democracy. If we allow cheating, and that's what this is, it's cheating, elections will no longer reflect the will of the people. In a democracy, people choose their representatives. This bill flips that principle on its head, letting politicians in DC choose their voters, and that is un-American. Members, the American dream still holds promise for each of our families, each of our constituents that we were sent here to represent. But if we sell out our democracy to DC bosses by handing them the five congressional seats that they have demanded, our children and grandchildren may only get to see the remnants of this democracy. So to Texans of every political stripe, if you believe in a government that responds when you need it most, this is not a solution for any of our problems. Members, it is not too late. I urge you to vote yes on this amendment, reject this attempt to rig our elections, and send a clear signal that our democracy is not for sale. End this racially discriminatory redistricting right now by voting yes on this amendment, and let's move on to the real business of the people of Texas.
Mr. Wally, for what purpose?
Would Mr. Turner yield for a few questions?
Mr. Turner, would you yield for Mr. Wally questions?
Yes, I will.
He will. Go ahead, Mr. Wally.
Representative Turner, in essence, your amendment strikes the enacting clause?
That's correct.
Okay.
It'll kill the bill.
It kills the bill. And I want to get to that point. I mean, I want to get to a certain region of the state so that we can focus our attention in that, and why you're trying to kill the bill with this amendment here. One of the reasons is, let me rephrase that. Are you aware of the total amount of Hispanic population in Harris County is about 4.7, 4.8 million people?
I didn't know the exact number, but I know it's considerable. I know, for example, Harris County has a greater number of Hispanic residents than really all of the Rio Grande Valley, which is striking.
And that's correct. So there are over 2 million Spanish surname people that live in Harris County. You're aware of that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are you familiar with Congressional District 29?
A little bit, yes.
Okay. You and I both worked in Congress, is that correct?
We did at one time, yes.
We both, not at the same, maybe not at the same time, but we both worked for members of Congress before we got elected, and so we're both familiar with congressional work, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Congressional 29, after the 1990 census, was created, Congressional 29 was created after the 1990 census. Is that your understanding?
That's my recollection, yes.
Okay. And it was created because Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act mandated the creation of Congressional District 29. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
And the reason was there was a, just astronomical growth of Latinos in Harris County. So that mandated the creation of a Latino opportunity district in Harris County for the first time ever.
That's right.
And that district has been, the north side and east ends of Houston have been the anchors of Congressional District 29. Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding, yes.
Under the proposed plan, this plan, let alone the 2021 map, but this plan, the Hispanic citizen voting age population of CD 29 goes from 64.4% to 42.9%. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, meaning that the Hispanic opportunity district will no longer exist. Is that, in essence, what's happening with this map?
Absolutely. Bringing that percentage down, first of all, below 50% Hispanic CVAP totally destroys that district as a Hispanic opportunity district. And obviously, a decline from 64.4% to 42.9% is a devastating blow to the strength of the Hispanic voters in that region.
And you're aware that the proposed plan pushes much of the former CD 29, the east end part of CD 29 into CD 9? Is that your understanding?
Yes, that is my understanding.
And much more perverse, bringing the Hispanic citizen voting age population in CD 9, the new one, to 50, lowers it drastically, lowers that district to 50.5%. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Now, that new district, CD 29, the Hispanic folk that lived in East Harris County now are connected to a district out in Liberty County. Is that fair to say?
Yes, and on that point, Representative Wally, you know, the introduced bill was bad enough, the introduced bill in the first session, the introduced bill in this second call session. The map you just described, we saw that for the first time on Monday, less than 48 hours ago, in the form of a committee substitute that moved CD 9 out into Liberty County.
So that was a change even under the previous map, not the 2021 one, 2021 map, but under the previous map, CD 9 stopped at the Harris County line into East Harris County. But now, this new version sticks those Latino folk in East Harris County and puts them out, you know, miles away that have no relationship, Liberty County, to folks in East End.
The gentleman's time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez, for what purpose?
I was gonna ask the gentleman to yield.
Are you asking for an extension of time? Ms. Gonzalez, are you asking for an extension of time? There's been a request for an extension of time. Is there any objection? There is objection, it's a record vote, the clerk will ring the bell. Vote aye if you're in favor, vote no if you're not. This is the first one. This is the first extension. This does not require unanimous consent. Show Mr. King voting aye. Show the chair voting aye. Show Ms. Weiner voting aye. Please vote from your desks, it's too many people around. Ms. Kerwin voting no. Members, this is the first extension of time, not the second. There being 107 ayes and 29 nays, the extension is granted.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Gonzalez, for what purpose?
Does a gentleman yield?
Would you yield, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
He will, Ms. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, are you aware that in North Texas, the Dallas-Fort Worth area...
Members, please take your conversations outside the rail.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, are you aware that in North Texas, the Dallas-Fort Worth area, there are no Latino opportunity districts?
Yes, I am aware of that.
Do you believe that it's fair for a region with roughly 1.7 million Latinos to have zero representation in the US House?
It is absolutely not fair.
Isn't it true that a Hispanic opportunity district could have been drawn in the past two decades in Dallas County but was not?
You're absolutely right, Representative Gonzalez, and in fact, members, including myself and Chairman Onchilla and others, proposed maps that did exactly that in 2021 to create a Latino opportunity district in Tarrant and Dallas Counties, but the majority rejected that opportunity to do that.
So isn't it also true that in the pending case challenging the state's 2021 maps, the Latino voters argue that the state violated the Voting Rights Act by failing to create a new Hispanic opportunity district in Dallas County?
Yes, they have argued that, and that case is still pending before a three-judge federal panel based in El Paso.
And would CD 33, under the proposed plan, still be considered a coalition district?
I don't know what the bill author intends for CD 33 to be perceived as. What I do know about CD 33 is that for the last 13 years, since 2012, that has been a majority-minority opportunity district that spans from Tarrant County to Dallas County, or from Dallas County to Tarrant County, if you prefer, being from Dallas County. And minority voters in CD 33 in Dallas and in Fort Worth and the communities in between, communities we represent in Grand Prairie, have had the ability to elect the candidate of their choice. And this map, House Bill Four, the map before us today, there are no voters remaining in Tarrant County who are still part of CD 33, and their voices are cracked and packed into other districts.
So under the proposed map, so what would happen to the communities of color in Tarrant County that are currently in CD 33?
The communities of color in CD 33 presently, and who have been in CD 33 since 2012, are splintered between multiple districts. In the southeast Fort Worth area, the neighborhoods of Poly, Representative Collier's District, House District 95, that is cracked and placed into Congressional District 25, which is a rural-based district that extends out nearly to Abilene. The north side of Fort Worth, which is roughly much of Representative Romero's district, is then submerged into Congressional District 12, where the voting base of power is centered in West Fort Worth and Parker County.
So it splits them into four majority-white districts and puts a small part into CD 30 based in Dallas? Is that correct?
So the bulk of the Tarrant County CD 33 is split between CD 12 and CD 25. Other parts of CD 33 are put into CD 6, which goes down south to Ellis and Navarro Counties. And then, with respect to CD 30, that is, of course, a historic Dallas-based district where African-American voters have had the ability to elect the candidate of their choice going back to the early 1990s. What they do there is they bring that further west into Tarrant County, packing it with the population that I have the privilege of serving in House District 101.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Flores, for what purpose?
Does the general yield for questions?
Would you yield, Mr. Turner?
Yes, I yield.
Yes, I yield.
He will.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Representative Turner, are you aware that in Austin, there are historic Black and Latino neighborhoods in East Austin?
Absolutely, yes.
And are you aware that they are also deeply rooted in rapidly growing Latino communities in Hayes County?
Yes.
In the proposed map, now these communities have been located in CD 27, all the way through sparsely populated rural counties like Austin and Wharton Counties, all the way to the coast through Matagorda and down to that part, to part of Nueses County. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
And in the current map, Nueses County is wholly contained in one district, but now is being split in two?
Correct.
What is the purpose of the proposed map in taking communities in East Austin and Hayes County and drawing them into a district with communities in Port Aransas?
Representative Flores, the, the result of, of them doing that is they crack and therefore dilute the collective voting strength of minority voters in Travis County, who currently are in a district where they have the ability to elect the candidate of their choice to the U.S. Congress. Under House Bill 4, that ability is stripped away. And, and they achieve that, they achieve that cracking and packing by, cracking really in this case, in drawing eastern Travis County down to the Gulf Coast, as you described.
And that has a dramatic impact on CD 35. Is that not correct?
Absolutely. CD 35 is a Voting Rights Act-protected district. It was one, originally a court order, I believe, required it to be drawn. And since it has been in existence, Latino voters have had the ability to elect the candidate of their choice in that district. And the current district as drawn today, voters have that choice. They will no longer have that choice if the legislature passes this bill.
So that does dramatically impact the Latino community in CD 35, as you just said, correct?
Absolutely. It, it impacts them in a very, very dramatic and negative way.
Were you, do you know, are you aware that there were any analysis performed to determine if Latino voters in the current CD 35 are able to elect a candidate of their choice in, in, in most elections?
Representative Flores, I'm not aware that the, the bill author or any of the proponents of the map did that analysis. I, I asked that exact question in our committee hearing. I was told no. I heard Representative Romero ask that question of, of the bill author just a short time ago. And I think he said he, he wasn't aware of any such analysis being done, if I understood him correctly.
So in summary, you're saying that the Latino community that currently lives in East Austin, in my district, in Hayes County, and also that, that connects along I-35 extending to San Antonio, are now being diluted of their, their votes are being diluted, and they are not being able to vote for candidates of their choice? Is that what you're telling me?
That's exactly right. They're, they're at the very least losing the ability to elect the candidate of their choice, which is an ability they have had, they have today and have had for several years now.
Well, as a representative of those communities and those Latinos, and currently in District 51, that are in CD 35, are being stripped of their opportunity and their voices to be able to elect representatives of their choice to Congress. So I appreciate your answers to that, and I, I, I really, I'm upset that this is happening to my district.
Representative Flores.
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Manuel, for what purpose?
Does a gentleman yield for a few questions?
Mr. Turner, would you yield?
I'll be happy to yield.
He will.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, are you aware that in 2021, the current congressional maps that passed the Fifth Circuit law case say that coalition districts were protected under the Voting Rights Act?
Yes, that's my understanding, that the court has held that, correct.
And in Campos, in the city of Baytown, a Fifth Circuit case from 1988 held that, held that distinct district minority groups may aggravate their population for purposes of vote dilution. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that was later overturned in the Pennyway, Pedway case, excuse me. Isn't that right?
So my, my understanding of the, the Pedway case is that, so that groups necessarily, didn't necessarily have a right to claim a voting rights-protected district under Section 2, if there were multiple ethnic minorities. But the Pedway case said nothing about what this map does, which is systematically going out and trying to find such districts that already exist naturally, and hunt them down and destroy them. That's what this bill does. So it's an important distinction on, on the Pedway case.
The gentleman's time has expired.
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Manuel, for what purpose?
I was, never mind. What can, sorry, can I ask for an, an extension?
You can, Mr. Manuel. An extension requires unanimous consent. A record vote has been requested on all motions today. The clerk will ring the bell. Vote aye if you're in favor of the extension. Vote no if you're not. There is objection. Their time is not extended. Chair recognizes Mr. Hunter to speak in opposition to the amendment.
Mr. Speaker, members, everybody knows, this is a standard amendment that basically kills the bill. It's called an enacting clause. So if you haven't been through this, this is just basically an amendment that kills the bill. And so I know you're going to be shocked, but I'm not going to be in favor of this particular amendment.
Mr. Spiller, for what purpose?
Yes, will the gentleman yield for questions?
Mr. Hunter, would you yield?
Absolutely.
He will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's been some discussion, in fact, on this amendment relative to the Pedway case and coalition districts. I, I want to ask you, you've already mentioned the Pedway case in, in your layout, and that was the August 1, 2024 case that the Fifth Circuit ruled Pedway versus Galveston County, where it said that coalition claims do not comport with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And in short, so that we've heard a lot of discussion about opportunity districts and so forth, but coalition districts are the subject of the Pedway case, and coalition districts are generally defined, is it your understanding, of districts that don't have one particular minority group that make up a majority of the district, but one or more of those minority, minority groups are combined together or aggregated to reach a majority? Is that a fair definition?
That is correct.
Okay. And you touched on it before in your layout, and I know we were short on time, but under the current district, I mean, under the current congressional maps that were under, not HB4, but what we're currently under, there are coalition districts that were created as such in '21 because of the law as it existed in Texas under the Fifth Circuit at that time. Is that a fair statement?
That is correct, in 2021.
And then, in fact, that, that law that was in place when these districts, when these districts were created under '21 was the Campos versus City of Baytown case, which is a 37-year-old case, but it was the law, not necessarily throughout the country, but it was the law in the state of Texas because it was the law in the Fifth Circuit. That was the precedent. Is that correct?
In Pedway, they referenced it, and that's what they said.
Okay. So now, in Texas, one of the reasons that we're doing this now is that we're, feel compelled to because of the Pedway case and the ruling in the Pedway case as it related, as it relates to these coalition districts, correct?
Well, I think it's a combination, Mr. Spiller. I think you have a U.S. Supreme Court Ruchel, you have a Fifth Circuit Pedway. The combination of both those cases are involved in this map.
Right. And you mentioned also in the Ruchel case that, that is a U.S. Supreme Court case that allows for partisan performance. And in fact, in, in that case, I think there were competing claims, whether or not there was Republican claims, Democrat claims, multiple issues there in the court. So we're not going to get into that. Partisan performance is absolutely okay, and we authorize that.
Yes. So the members know, the U.S. Supreme Court considered two states, one Republican that were redistricting to reduce Democrat, gain Republican, then one state Democrat that wanted to reduce Republican, one who had been there 20 years. And the U.S. Supreme Court said, that is not the judicial purview, and political performance is a criteria.
And we know that political performance can be done, and in fact, has been done in other states already. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
In fact, there are some states that are Democrat-controlled states, Democrat-majority, some of which are the favorite vacation spots of certain people in this room, that, whether it be California, New York, Illinois, New Jersey, Maryland, Massachusetts, that have already done this to a fairly extreme degree. Would that be a fair statement?
That is true. I mean, this is not unique. That's why the courts have addressed it. And both parties that you referenced have been involved.
There's been some discussion in, recently about some of the districts in and around Harris County, and I just want to ask you briefly on some of those. We talked about District 18, what we call the Barber Jordan Historic District. When we went to Houston, we heard a lot of testimony about that. But it was, under HB4, it was, it's currently one of these coalition districts, and under HB4, changes to a majority-black C-VAP district. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is now 50.71% Black C-VAP. In 2021, it was 38.99% Black C-VAP.
And so previously, Black voters in that district did not hold a majority, but under your bill, under HB4, they actually do. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. And we also heard a lot about compactness, and, and you think that's what you've done generally with HB4, but, but specifically in Harris County as well, dealt with that issue of compactness. Can you touch on that?
Yes. You know, even though public hearings may have opposition or support, we heard from public in those hearings about the compactness issue. And one of the issues was the Austin to San Antonio district, and why they felt that should be looked at. Same thing in Houston. They looked at 18 to the original rather than how it has spread out over the years. So yes, compactness has been involved.
Okay. And also, in, relative to Harris County, we talked about District 9, which was also, second one in Harris County, a coalition district, and the district that was addressed in the Pedway case. And now, under your HB4, changed from a coalition district to a majority Hispanic C-VAP district. Is that correct?
Yes. For the record, the Hispanic C-VAP of Congressional District 9, under this plan, the Hispanic C-VAP is 50.15%. In 2021, it was 25.73%.
All right. And, and I'm trying to move quickly, but on District 29, one of the other districts out of Harris County, we've heard some testimony, or some questions about that today. We heard testimony about it in the committee. But it went from a majority Hispanic C-VAP district to a majority Hispanic VAP district. But should, is it a fair statement that it would, should continue to perform as a Democrat district?
Let me give you the information on 29, because I just heard some of that, so that everybody knows. 29 has gone from a Black C-VAP in 18.31% in 2021 to now 32.79%. As they said, Hispanic C-VAP decreased but to 43.12%. So you basically have Hispanic Black percentage that is plus 70. The other note is that the political performance in 29 stays Democrat.
Right. And likewise, the other district I want to talk about in Harris County was District 7. We heard quite a bit of testimony regarding District 7 in the committee. And it was a very diverse district, but I think it remains a very diverse district, and I think also continues to be Democrat. It has a Democrat representative, Congresswoman. I think it will continue to perform Democrat in that district. Is that correct?
Yeah, the data on 7 is that it has increased slightly more Democrat performance. The other characteristics do not change. But under 7, if you look at the new numbers, they're very, very close to what they were.
And these, this claim, that a lot of this stuff is racially motivated and, and race-negative, let me ask you, and you've touched on it before, but we went under the current map from zero majority-black C-VAP districts in the state of Texas, and now under your map, we added two to that list, where there, there are two majority-black C-VAP districts, correct?
Correct. 18, and is, is one of the ones that we talked about in 30.
And on the current map, we have seven majority Hispanic C-VAP districts, and that is increased under HB4, under your bill, to eight. So we're adding one more majority Hispanic C-VAP district, correct?
Majority Hispanic VAP districts in 20-
The gentleman's time has expired.
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Turner, for what purpose?
May I extend the gentleman's time?
Yes.
There's a motion to extend time. A, a record vote has been requested on all votes. The clerk will ring the bell. Vote aye if you're in favor of extending time. Vote no if you're opposed. Have all members voted. Mr. Basut voting aye. Have all members voted. Being 134 ayes, 4 nays, the motion passes. The time is extended. Mr. Turner, for what purpose?
Will the gentleman yield for some questions?
Mr. Hunter, would you yield? He will.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. So when we discussed your bill in committee a few weeks ago, and then again on Monday, you told me that you didn't know where the map originally came from. Is that still your statement? You don't know where the map came from?
All I know is, I met with counsel. Counsel drafted it. Whether they're the origin or others, that I do not know.
So you can't tell us, you can't tell the members who had their hand on the mouse, draw, moving lines, moving precincts around. You can't, you cannot tell us that today?
I can tell you that the law firm did, but the specific names I do not know.
Can you tell us, you said the law firm did it. Can you tell us who was directing the law firm to change the lines?
Well, I asked the law firm to see if we could increase political performance. I said that in my opening.
What can you tell us about the chain of custody of this map as it came into your possession?
I went to the law firm. They gave it back to me.
And that person didn't tell you where they got the map from?
No, I mean, as your organizations hire lawyers, whoever they hired, whoever they involved, it's up to them. I gave a chore, just like we all do on legislation and bills. They came up with a draft. I made sure that they dotted their i's, crossed their t's, followed the law. They assured me. I talked to them on what the proposal was, and then I presented.
So, Mr. Hunter, you've served here a long time. You're one of the most senior members of the body. Don't you, in, in, in seniority, of course, I mean?
Why, thank you, Mr. Turner.
Wouldn't you agree it's unusual, if not unheard of, that a bill author brings the bill before the House, but we don't know where the idea for the bill came from? We don't know who's asking for the change in the law, what the rationale for the policy change is. I mean, isn't that highly unusual?
Absolutely not. And that's not what I've said. Now, and you've heard me. We've been taught- been talking about, let's not all go hide behind our desks. Congressional redistricting has been on the radar since April. This isn't any surprise. It's been talked about, and on this floor, we've talked about it. Two, it is not unusual that you get into creation of law, that you go talk to law firms, and it isn't unusual. I did ask to see if we could increase political performance, and I've been clear on that. And so, this was presented, it met my request, and this is what's being presented. And partisanship, political performance, pro-Republican is fine. It's legal.
So, so actually, I, I didn't hear anything about congressional redistricting until June at the earliest. I didn't hear it in April. Who told you in April that we were going to do this?
I've been on this House floor. I can't remember. Now, let me tell you something. You told me how senior, and how I've been here a long time, and you've been here a pretty good amount of time, Mr. Turner.
Fair point.
I can't believe that those ears turned off on congressional redistricting in spring and just popped up in June. It's been all over the internet, it's been all over the discussion. Everybody's been talking about it. The question is, would this be a special session? Did not know. Governor called it.
Okay. So, since you don't know where the map originally came from...
Well, no, I do know where it originally came from. It came from the law firm.
Okay, but you don't know actually who drew the map?
The law firm.
But you don't know the individual who drew the map?
No, I know lawyers in the firm.
Okay. So, but if we don't know specifically who drew the map, how, how do you know what the map drawer's intentions were?
As you and your third-party organizations hire lawyers, you give them an objective, which is, can you increase political performance? The law firm goes out to their own office, drafts, provides you a product, you discuss with them. If you agree, you present that particular draft. And that's what we did. Nothing unusual. That's what everybody's doing, and your side of the aisle is doing the same.
Were you present during any of the map drawing?
All I did is I had meetings with them, where they, after I gave them the instructions, and they presented the information to me.
Okay. Did you...
Did I go into the details in the, in the districts? No.
Okay. Did you review any drafts and suggest any changes when you saw the maps?
No, that, it was presented to me. I reviewed with them, looked at it, seemed to be okay to me. We may have had some discussion to do some modifications here and there.
Do you know if anyone else reviewed drafts of the map and made changes?
Well, I'm sure somebody in the law firm did. You said, if, but do I know personal people that did? The answer is no.
Okay.
Other than, I do have names in the law firm that you asked me about in committee.
How, how was it communicated to you that you would be the bill author of House Bill Four?
Chairman Vasut, which is very natural, asked if I would be the bill author, and I said yes, and it's probably because of your introductory comments about me being a senior member and involved here a long time. But, he asked me, and I said, "I'm glad to do it," and that's who asked me to carry.
Okay. And you, you've referenced the law firm several times. You stayed in committee. That's the law firm of Butler Snow. So, who, who actually hired Butler Snow to consult on these maps?
To be honest, I do not know the specifics on how they were hired. I don't know that. I don't know that.
But you are a client of Butler Snow.
I, I am a client, and I have been placed in whatever agreement they have. I agree.
Okay.
And that, that was continuing since 2021.
Understood. So, but you don't know who hired them, and you don't know who's paying their bills?
Well, you got to remember, they, we have a 2021 litigation still going on in El Paso.
Sure.
So, I still have involvement with them. Now, this issue, which is supplemental, different than the 2021, they have been engaged. My privilege, my involvement follows and is incorporated. I don't know the specifics, don't know the engagement, don't know that, but I do know that I get continuing involvement from the firm.
Okay. How did Senator King get the map to file it on the Senate side?
That I don't know. I think I've talked to Senator King twice, and I have not asked him about that, and I don't, if you, to be honest, to everybody in this room, I have not read the Senate bill. So I do not know if it follows our bill or what. But I have not asked him where he got his.
Okay. Do you know, did the map originate with you or with Senator King?
Whatever he filed, I do not know. I don't know if he took a copy of ours and refiled it over there. I don't know.
Okay. Last on this, is, why is the House originating this map this session rather than the Senate, since the Senate initiated it in 2021?
To be honest, I don't know why. 2021, I believe it was SB 6 in 2021, and in 2025,